Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Reciting over today's meeting, Barbara Lomas.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to call to order the January 18th, 2018 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick. Commissioner Strong. Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Could you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We've got lots to do tonight, so we're going to just move ahead and we're going to go on to Public Statements Agenda Item Number Three. Will now receive public statements. This is the time reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. If you're here to make comment on the draft making downtown Bakersfield High Speed Rail Station Area Vision Plan and Draft Environmental Impact Report, this is not the time to speak. That was a mouthful. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one, will move on to the Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Items, Agenda Item Number Four. These agenda items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a consent calendar non-public hearing item for separate consideration? Seeing no one, may I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on consent calendar non-public hearing items?
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Kater, may I have a second?
I'll second.
I didn't see who that came from.
That would be me.
Oh, because Commissioner Coleman. Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Thank you. We will now move on to public hearings portion of our agenda. And please turn off your cell phones. That'd be nice. Thanks. Agenda item number six we're moving on to. This is the only item on tonight's public hearing agenda is the taking of public comments on the draft make. Here we go again. Draft making downtown high-speed rail station area vision plan and draft environmental impact report. After everyone has had the opportunity to comment on the project, the public hearing will be closed and the comments will be provided to the city staff for consideration and response. The SEQA public comment period will remain open until February 19th, 2018, so you can continue to submit your written comments to the city up until that time. Now that I've explained the process to you, I will ask staff to provide us with a presentation on the project before I open the public hearing. Ms. Kitchen.
Thank you, Chairman Lomas. Good evening, planning commissioners and public. Thank you for attending tonight. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge the team that is here with me tonight. We've been working on this project together for over two years, and it has been a genuine group effort. We have Cecilia Grego here, who is the principal planner in my department and the project manager for this vision plan. We also have Andy Hagland, who's been our counsel through this process. And we are also joined by our consultant, Gunner Hand, and members of his team. And this group effort has also involved city staff from Public Works, Technology Services, as well as support from Kern Cog and the city council, and most importantly, participation by the residents of Bakersfield, who have participated in many workshops, community meetings, stakeholders committee, and much more. So I will start out tonight by providing a little bit of background and explain why we are here. In 2008, California voters approved a bond measure known as Proposition 1A for the nation's first voter-approved financing mechanism for the high-speed rail. The California High Speed Rail Authority was established for the planning, design, construction, and operation of the future statewide high-speed rail system. The authority states that by 2029, the high-speed rail system will run from San Francisco to the Los Angeles basin in under three hours at speeds of over 200 miles per hour. At final build-out, the station will, or the system will eventually extend to Sacramento and San Diego totaling 800 miles with up to 24 high-speed rail stations located throughout the state. This is all relevant to Bakersfield because the authority has selected Bakersfield to be one of those 24-station cities. And the authority has indicated that this enhanced connection to the rest of the state will provide opportunities for economic development, job creation, and revitalization of our community. As you can see, Bakersfield is well situated at the center of this future high-speed rail system and provides an extraordinary opportunity for high-speed rail riders to connect to the rest of the state, to the west and to the east, all through Bakersfield. So after the approval of Proposition 1A, the state began extensive environmental studies of each segment of the high-speed rail line, including preparation of an environmental impact report for the Fresno to Bakersfield section. That document identified a preferred alignment from Fresno to Bakersfield known as the hybrid alignment, which is shown as the blue line on this map. That alignment follows in part the BNSF rail line through Bakersfield and would include a station located on Truxton Avenue near the current Amtrak station. In May of 2014, the authority's Board of Directors certified that final EIR. However, upon review of the hybrid alignment, the city concluded that, in addition to potentially impacting more than 300 homes, the hybrid alignment also affected many city assets, including the Corporation Yard, housing projects, and parking facilities at the Rabobank Arena and Convention Center. The hybrid alignment would also affect Mercy Hospital on Truxton and the future Bakersfield Commons Project. Therefore, the city filed a lawsuit against High Speed Rail in June of 2014, and several other entities also filed suit, including the County of Kern, First Free Will Baptist Church, Dignity Health, World Oil, the City of Shafter, and Kings County. City staff identified an alternative alignment and proposed it to the High Speed Rail for further evaluation. That alignment is showed as the green line on this map. In December of 2014, the authority agreed to study this alternative alignment, which settled the city's lawsuit. This alignment became known as the locally-generated alignment and generally follows the Union Pacific Rail Line and includes a station at F Street. So since then, in 2015, the authority advised that they were offering planning grants to the selected station cities, and the purpose of these grants was to allow each city to prepare a station area plan for the area around the proposed high-speed rail station. The city accepted that grant, and in December of 2015, the city council approved an agreement with the consulting firm of Skidmore, Owings, and Merrill to develop this station area plan, which would help the city prepare for the benefits that may come with a high-speed rail station. Now, when the city accepted this grant, we also wanted to ensure that this planning process would have an independent utility and help the community think broadly and build upon past planning efforts to launch an updated vision for the revitalization of downtown Bakersfield overall. So therefore, we've spent the last two years hosting a variety of community workshops, meetings, discussions, and public interactions, and then integrated the input received into this Making Downtown Bakersfield Vision Plan. The process revealed that Bakersfield residents want to see a downtown that is vibrant, walkable, connected, safe, and full of amenities. So during that same time period, the High Speed Rail continued their work on their supplemental SEQA document to study the LGA alignment. In May of 2016, the High Speed Rail Board identified the LGA as their recommended preferred alternative alignment. That action was important because it gave the city direction on which station location to study in this vision plan. In November of last year, the authority then released their draft supplemental EIR/ EIS. That document analyzed the LGA and compared it to the hybrid alignment, among other alternatives. Ultimately, the document identified the LGA as the preferred alternative and specifically states, in part, that it would result in lesser impacts associated with agricultural lands, residential displacements, special-status plant species, riparian areas, and permanent impacts to jurisdictional waters, that it would cost less to construct, would improve traffic, pedestrian and bicycle safety and circulation in the City of Shafter, and would reduce overall system-wide travel time. The public review for the state's document recently closed, and their next step will be for the High Speed Board Authority to consider certification of that supplemental EIR and approval of the LGA as the alignment through Bakersfield. The High Speed Rail has indicated that that decision may occur later this year, and I see that they are here in the audience this evening. So earlier this month, I'm excited to say that the city completed our work on the draft vision plan and associated draft DIR, and we released it for public review on January 5th. Our consultant, Gunner Hand, is here this evening to provide an overview of the extensive public outreach process, the results, and to provide an overview of the vision plan and the accompanying environmental document. So before I turn it over to Gunner, I have a few housekeeping items quickly. First, I wanted to explain that the fundamental purpose of a station area plan is to establish a strategic vision for the future development of the area around the high-speed rail station. Now, we know that the ultimate decision regarding the location of the station will be made by the High Speed Rail at some point in the future. We also know that there are a variety of opinions about which location is preferred, Truxton or F Street. So while this vision plan followed the High Speed Rail Board Authority decision in May of 2016 and includes a location at F Street, the important thing to remember is that our entire downtown will be affected and potentially revitalized by a station, regardless of the location. So this vision plan is intended to address the bigger picture for downtown. It looks at key factors and concepts that can affect the future development of downtown, such as land use patterns, urban design and infrastructure, multimodal transportation services and circulation, access for parking pedestrians and bicycles, open space and recreational opportunities, the importance of the arts and culture, and much more. As Gunner will explain, the plan establishes a conceptual phased approach to future physical development over the next 10, 20, and 30 years, and truly focuses on downtown overall. So lastly, I wanted to talk about the purpose of tonight's hearing. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to present this draft plan and the draft EIR to the public and to provide the public with an extra opportunity to present their comments regarding the adequacy of the draft EIR. The draft EIR was released on January 5th, 2018, and the comment period is scheduled to close on February 19th of 2018. Tonight's hearing is not required by the state's SEQA statute, and it's actually part of the city's official SEQA implementation procedures. So after Gunner's presentation tonight, the public will have an opportunity to present their comments. The Planning Commission and staff will not be responding to those comments tonight. However, commissioners may offer comments of their own if they wish to do so, or they can present them in writing prior to February 19th. All comments received throughout this process will be recorded and provided to staff for response. After all of the comments are received this evening, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission make a motion for all comments to be forwarded to staff for preparation of a response and the final EIR. The vision plan and EIR will then be scheduled for an additional public hearing later this spring, after the final EIR is completed. At that hearing, the Planning Commission will have an opportunity to discuss the comments received, ask questions, make statements, and finally make a recommendation to city council regarding certification of the final EIR and approval of the vision plan. At that point, the project will then be scheduled for city council for final consideration. And I would note that that meeting also provides the public with another opportunity to be heard on this important project. So with that, I will turn it over to Gunner Hand, our consultant from SOE. He will provide you with a very exciting presentation about the last two years of this public effort.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen. Madam Chair, fellow Planning Commissioners, members of the public and staff. Again, my name is Gunner Hand. I work for the Los Angeles office of Skidmore, Owings, and Merrill. I was on the consultant side, the project manager for our team. And I think today, we wanted to kind of take a step back and give you the full picture for the benefit of everyone here tonight. As Ms. Kitchen said, it was a two-year process where we think that we put together a relatively robust engagement process, working with the community hand-in-hand on developing essentially a revitalization project, or revitalization plan for downtown, one that would make downtown high-speed rail ready. So I think today, I'm going to go over generally how we started this project, the outreach that we did, some of the early existing conditions analyses that we did that really propelled the development of scenarios, and ultimately the vision that you have in front of you today. After I complete very quickly, Eric Von Berg with Win Consultants, who is the lead on the environmental document, will come and provide an additional couple of slides and comments for everyone's consideration. So, project goals. These have been the same project goals since the RFP. They've carried through the entire process. And really, again, the essence of this project was to be really sort of two things. A downtown revitalization strategy, but also a high-speed rail station area plan. And I would say through the course of the process, what we found collectively as a stakeholder group and as a city and as consultants is that making downtown Bakersfield high-speed rail ready was revitalizing downtown Bakersfield. This timeline is essentially out of date. I left it up there because I think it's important to note that we've been going through a very diligent process over the last six months with the environmental document and the development of the vision plan. Essentially, early last summer is when we had our last sort of public meeting, and we started to transition from a planning stage into an implementation stage. And I think to the credit of the community, there's a lot of things that you've seen in the plan that have already sort of started to take shape and form and move forward. A testament, I think, to really the grassroots revitalization that's going on in downtown Bakersfield, which quite frankly happened well before I even showed up. But again, I think just to frame the context, this is stuff that we all know about downtown Bakersfield, but I think it's really important to reiterate, and that is, we know downtown has a lot of potential. It has a lot of great cultural venues, both new and old. There are lots of programs that happen downtown, and when they do, I think a lot of people show up to those programs. I think that speaks to the desire and the character and the uniqueness of downtown within the region. There's a lot of historic buildings, even though we lost a lot of them in the 1950s earthquakes, there's still a very good building stock in downtown Bakersfield, some being preserved, some not as much. But there's also been quite a bit of investment downtown. Back in the old CRA days, we did the Mill Creek Linear Park, a lot of developments still happening up until the last couple of years, residual projects from the old CRA, but we've put a lot of money into downtown. It is still the government center of the region. It is still the central business district of the region. But there's also a lot of opportunity. We see a lot of underutilized properties predominantly on the upper floors, things that could be very, very quickly sort of, we believe, with the right type of focus, revitalize that existing sort of building floor area and space. We did a market analysis, and part of our consideration was the absorption of not necessarily just building new, but that sort of underutilized floor areas in those second, third, fourth floors of downtown, attracting some of that square footage that we projected. Again, but there's also a lot of infill opportunities, whether they're surface parking lots, vacant parcels, still in and around the project area. Again, lots of opportunity. And I think that there's already a lot of good connections that exist for its size. For instance, Bakersfield has a relatively robust bike network. Of course, we can always do better. Every city can. But I think it's important to reflect on the work, the good work that's already been done, that is already ongoing, that really we took when we came here for Bakersfield a little over two years ago and tried to run with. And I think that's really what we really tried to focus with this project, was there were so many things happening, not necessarily in silos, but things happening independent of one another, and this was really an opportunity to bring all those stakeholders together, tie a bow around it, and sort of move us together collectively in a much more impactful way. And again, I think we're on the verge. We're feeling it right now. There's a lot of new retail and restaurants downtown. There's a sort of energy that's starting to collect and grow. And so what we wanted to do again with this vision plan was, how do we capture that, maybe in a way codify it, and really propel it forward into the future with some new ideas, some new energy, but also some collective effort. So the process. And I think for the process, I'm going to go over quickly the engagement process first, and then I'll get to sort of the mechanics of the different milestones of the work plan for Making Downtown Bakersfield. So we had three primary engagement milestones that I'm going to review. What's not going to be included in these slides is all the things that happened in between that. We had a stakeholder group made of many stakeholders in and around downtown, property owners, business owners, residents, other advocates, nonprofits. We had a work planning group with the city, different departments, and the High Speed Rail Authority. And there was just a whole bunch of other events that either I was invited to, or Jackie or Cecilia were invited to, excuse me, Ms. Kitchen or Ms. Grego were invited to, where we sort of worked in and around downtown, sort of spreading the word initially, seeking additional buy-in, trying to encourage more people to come to the table and give us their ideas and get engaged in their community. And the first one of those big milestones was this sort of vision workshop process that we did. We did 11 of them. About over 150 people showed up across those 11, but we did those inside the project area and outside the project area. This really, the focus of these vision workshops was to identify the community values that Ms. Kitchen outlined earlier, and that you can see at the top of your screen here. But really, it was important for us to, in our first brush, go to where people are as opposed to call those folks to us. We saved that for the other two engagement activities. I think there was a sort of progression of momentum across the project timeline. We sort of saw new faces. We're always sort of coming to the table at these different events, new ideas, and again, new stakeholders to carry it through. Our second event happened in August 2016. This was right around when we were starting to develop the different scenarios for this development that we were projecting with high-speed rail. Excuse me. And so we did a community workshop, really to try to ask the question, okay, well, we're projecting this amount of development. Where do you think it would be best suited? And I think that there was sort of a recognition there that while it sounds like a lot, the project area is a relatively large space, so we needed to be strategic in how we sort of focused that development, at least in terms of how we vision it. And then the final public hearing happened, again, sort of late last spring, or last spring, and it was held at the Fox Theater. And I think this was before we really started out the development of that final vision. We did not want to have a final engagement opportunity where we said, here's the final plan. What do you think? We really wanted to have that sort of last litmus test with the community to sort of get better ideas of how we could take those scenarios that we developed, and I'll dive into those a little bit later, how we got those scenarios that we developed together and put them into a phased development strategy. And it was also sort of a milestone, if you will, in and of itself where we said, okay, now is the time where we shift from a planning group, a stakeholder group, to kind of an implementation or booster committee. And that was sort of the milestone hosted by Mayor Goh. So I think it's important to also go over the existing condition analysis and some of the highlights that we learned, because it is in the study of this place and of the people, of the culture, that I think grew some of our greatest ideas early on. And then we sort of worked through the rest of the process, vetting those ideas, fine-tuning them, and identifying champions, really. So I'm going to go over the existing conditions analysis next. So we learned a couple of things from both our market analysis and our physical asset study moving forward, and that was, we are definitely competing with the more suburban development around downtown, but we think with the different, with investment, we can compete better to attract more jobs and more housing. Same thing. With more, with interventions, again, because of the uniqueness of downtown across the region, a relatively large region, maybe even bigger than Kern County, we know that we can attract more hotels and more retail downtown. And when you look at sort of, this is sort of the nerdy planner view of downtown Bakersfield, it is part and parcel with the most walkable community in the United States arguably, which is Portland, Oregon. The block sizes are small. You guys have alleys. That makes it multiple different ways and routes that you can get around downtown. It is very, very walkable. I think that there's just sort of this, there was this perception, and as we all know, perception can be reality. But again, going from downtown to Mill Creek is not a very long distance. So how do we close that perception gap with different interventions? And again, I think it was important for us early on, you know, when we came here and we saw the bike lanes, and we saw the sort of the built environment and the sort of design, if you will, of downtown, and we started to dive into policies. You guys had complete streets policies. You were doing sort of all of these best practices that you asked us to come and to sort of both educate and elevate the discourse, but a lot of it was already happening, which was not a surprise to us, but it may have been a surprise to the city that you were, we were a validation of, no, you're on the right path. We also started, I should say, an infrastructure analysis, looking at all the different telecommunications, water, electric, sewer, stormwater. The vast majority of those are controlled by private utilities. And the gist of the infrastructure analysis, I would say, was the private utilities, as private utilities are, say that they can meet any demand, because that's how they make money. And then we sort of set on the path with sewer and stormwater, with Mr. Padilla's help, in fact, to try to start the assessment of what it would take to analyze what our sewer and, excuse me, sewer and stormwater capacity is moving forward. That ended up becoming one of, as you'll see, as you have seen perhaps, as you've read it, but you will see later in this presentation, ended up becoming one of our sort of top 11 implementation actions in the first 10 years. But when we drove around and walked around and took transit around, we also saw that there was, again, a lot of potential in terms of underutilized parcels, underutilized being sort of the soft sites, if you will, for future development, whether it's infill on surface parking lots or on vacant parcels. When we started mapping out all the different alleyways, again, another condition we thought that was unique, you can kind of see in this image, the red lines are the alleyways. Some are horizontal, some are vertical, some are gaps, but the one line of alleyways that had continuous integrity all the way from Mill Creek to the river essentially, also happened to be where you guys already had a pedestrian paseo, a pedestrian mall on Wall Street. We saw a lot of different types of open space. Again, the investment in the Mill Creek area, along the Kern River, but sort of also sort of parceled out, there has been sort of streetscape improvements throughout downtown as well. But we also saw that they were somewhat disjointed. There was a lack of connectivity amongst them. But then we said, well, if high-speed rail comes through on this corridor, for instance, we have an opportunity to bring the river into the community and connect the Kern River Trail to the Mill Creek Trail, or Mill Creek Linear Park. But the one that I always like to end on, that we learned from the existing conditions analysis, came from our study of other high-speed rail station areas around the world. As you know, this is the only high-speed rail station, only high-speed rail system other than the one that's kind of planned to go from Palmdale to Las Vegas, but at the time we were doing this, that was still kind of in the air. There is no high-speed rail system in our hemisphere, so we had to look elsewhere. So we did the best to sort of have a comparable size and location to different cities, mostly in Europe. And what we found was, those stations and those station areas optimized their economic development by having strong pedestrian and transit connectivity to that station. So you can unlock that much more development if you have a strong pedestrian, excuse me, a strong pedestrian and transit access to it. And I think that's when we started realizing that the F Street location, while F Street is one of the entrances, it was also along what is essentially your quote-unquote "main street," Chester Avenue. So the vision. I talked about open space a little bit in moving forward, excuse me, in the last couple of slides. But what we saw here was, if you sort of take this idea of expanding what you have on Wall Street and connecting the river to Mill Creek, if you try to bring the high-speed, excuse me, the river through the high-speed rail station site and connect it to Mill Creek, and if you potentially do extend even Mill Creek, again, this is a vision plan, so we're looking way out into the future, if you continue Mill Creek along the canal up to the river, you create this ring of open space that frames a focus of future development. you create this ring of open space that frames a focus of future development. Again, with a highlight on Chester Avenue. And so this is just an image of, of sort of looking south along Chester Avenue with the High Speed Rail in the bottom right, again, transit connectivity, and what we're sort of rethinking what Garza Circle could be, and how it connects to the city, formerly the historic sort of gateway into downtown. So how do we reimagine that? So I'm going to go over quickly some of the typological improvements, public realm being the first. So again, we sort of looked at both existing projects that were already happening, the 23rd, 24th Street, how do we, how do we know if we're going to, if we're going to move forward with that project? How could we leverage that to, to improve sort of connectivity from what you could call sort of the historic core to the northern downtown area? But also how you could potentially improve Wall Street, really not doing anything terribly different than what you've already done to that one section of it, just, trying to get my bearings here, I apologize, just west of Chester, but how, what would it look like, again, if you extended it all the way down to the Linear, to the Linear Park? And again, in terms of bike facilities, I think some of this was closing the existing gaps, which had already been planned in your Bicycle Master Plan, so we're just sort of reiterating things that had already been happening. We don't need to reinvent the wheel if we've already gone through these planning processes in the past. Excuse me. But also thinking about new typologies. On K Street, for instance, we thought about this idea of a bike boulevard. It is already sort of broken in half, right just north of 21st Street. It doesn't go all the way through. It has sort of a tight-knit sort of feel. How do we introduce these type, these new typologies if you don't necessarily feel comfortable riding your bike on Chester? Is there another way, a parallel sort of more leisurely path moving forward? So again, try to, try to put forward new best practices, new ideas in a vision planning process, but also just sort of work with what was already, what is already there and expand on that. And again, this is just another image of sort of, if you're looking north and west, you can see the Garza Circle, do I have a little, there you go, you can see sort of the High Speed Rail station over here with the sort of new district along Garza Circle, this being the Wall Street, again, is this sort of organizing principle to attract development. Just like High Speed Rail attracts development to it, any sort of public improvement attracts a private developer, a private development, in the sense that it is an amenity that can be supported. And then transit enhancements. And again, these are already in some of your regional transit plans, but really sort of, how do you take the existing transit access, both on California Avenue and Chester Avenue, and start to sort of upgrade that slowly over time into a bus rapid transit system in the long term? There's these sort of incremental steps that you can take that doesn't have to cost a lot of money right up front, but sort of, again, sort of how do you, how do you work towards that in an organized fashion? But also, we had this idea, and I know that had been tried previous, in a previous lifetime, but this idea of some sort of connector shuttle. We didn't want to, you know, moving forward with sort of the F Street location as the focus of this vision plan, we didn't, we also felt it was really important to still connect all the stuff that's going along, occurring around Mill Creek in general, but also connecting that Amtrak station to High Speed Rail in the future. So we created, we had this idea of creating a, or reintroducing perhaps, a shuttle system that would sort of circulate around downtown. All the buses currently either go through or sort of go in and out of downtown, sort of connecting all of those dots, again, as a part of this idea of how to bring all of those amenities together. And again, this is sort of a shot of Chester Avenue with certain, with bus rapid transit, maintaining the bike lanes, but again, what does it look like when we extend Wall Street across Chester? And then we had floated the idea multiple times, both as consultants, but also from the stakeholders as well, and this is just an idealized version of it, but what would it be like if we could bring back the clock tower? Not exactly in its historic location, but pretty close. So that takes us to the phased development strategy, and again, this is sort of what it looks like in 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, and each of those segments has a different focus, because it reflects a different increment of development that we can expect from, sort of in coordination with the build-out of the High Speed Rail system. So we get a little bit of development in that first sort of 10 years, just because this is a rapidly growing region. So we talked a lot about how do you shave off a couple percentage points of what already is that natural growth and focus that into downtown with these sort of interventions or public realm improvements or, or other infrastructure improvements. Moving on to the sort of 20-year phase, the idea being, you know, it will not be in full build-out, but it will, the expectation is that High Speed Rail will be in operation in that period of time, it'll land somewhere in the middle. So what do we do to connect that High Speed Rail station into the historic core? And then in the 30-year build-out, when the, when the High Speed Rail is at its full build-out, so from Sacramento and San Francisco all the way down to San Diego, it's just that many more people moving through the system produces that much more economic activity. So I'll go through those really quick. And so between now and 2025, our focus again, and this is an image looking, again, that green line, sorry, that green line right here is that Wall Street corridor, this being Chester Avenue and Mill Creek's back there, right? So with that type of intervention or public realm improvement, again, as an organizing principle for development, how can we focus infill development in that area to, again, break down that perception that it's a long distance from Chester Avenue to Mill Creek, and it's really not? But also, how can we create sort of more activity in that area and expand prosperity across downtown? And it looks a little something like this. Again, these phased development maps are all in the, all in the plan for everyone to look at. These are sort of the collection of all of those ideas I showed earlier, broken out by bike lane transit and public realm improvements. But that sort of blue shade, if you will, is where we think it's important to sort of take what's going on in the historic core and start to move it towards Mill Creek, the Mill Creek Linear Park. Again, taking an investment that we've already made in downtown and connecting it to what we've been calling the historic core, but also recognizing that there's, that development strategy is still ongoing. So 22, excuse me, 2025 to 2035, again, this is when High Speed Rail is now in operation, the focus being along Chester Avenue. It's a little bit farther than, say, Chester Avenue to Mill Creek, but not too much. But again, I think that there's this perception, part of it by 23rd and 24th Street, part of it by the railroad tracks, part of it by the freeway, but how do you, how do you start to close that gap, both perceptionally and physically? And again, sort of similar to the strategy in the first 10 years, but really sort of building out a little bit around the High Speed Rail station. As that lands, that is where development will be attracted to. It's a massive investment, public investment, again. But again, how do we sort of connect that so we don't have two nodes of development, but sort of, or sort of two downtowns, if you will, but two nodes of the same downtown? That spine being Chester Avenue, which is the historical spine of the, of the region, not just the city. Again, these maps are all in the plan for everyone's view. And again, the blue sort of focusing, really focused, concentrated on Chester Avenue, again, you see sort of the expansion of the bike network, sort of the upgrading of the two main sort of transit corridors in the region, but also a recognition that when High Speed Rail is in operation, it will attract quite a bit of development. So we have to prepare for that, and we have to think about that. And with the level of development that we're thinking about, again, it's an opportunity to, if you look at Garza Circle right now, it's, it's very automobile-oriented, but there's a transformation that could happen with the right tools, with the right focus, and I would point out, with the right patience. I think very often in some of our High Speed Rail case studies that we looked at, cities would jump to whatever development came first, and so the last thing you want to do is, for instance, and I'm not bagging on Walmart, but build a Walmart next to a High Speed Rail station. You know, it is important to sort of landbank those uses for when, when we expect the type of development that will occur, which is a much more denser mixed-use type of development. And then the final sort of phased development, if you will, 2035 to the Project Horizon, which was 2045. Again, all of these, I think, always focus on that absorption rate I mentioned earlier is always focus on the core first, and then sort of try to connect Mill Creek to the historic core, always focus on the core first and then sort of make that connection along Chester Avenue, always focus on the core first, even in that 30-year segment, that 30-year timeframe. But again, start to really fully build out this idea of kind of a Garza Circle district. And there is quite a bit of soft sites currently out there. And again, so you sort of see it right here. I think that there's an expectation, and again, this is based on our case studies, that currently as, as thinking has it, there's, there's potentially even development in and on the High Speed Rail site itself, but we didn't want to, we didn't want to factor that in because we weren't sure how that would work, or if that would work, or if that was even the strategy of the High Speed Rail Authority. It was, again, a strategy of other High Speed Rail systems predominantly in Japan. They are real estate developers and transit agencies, for instance, in other countries. But, but again, sort of focusing on that corridor, building out this new Garza Circle district, if you will, but also in that 30-year timeframe when we get full build-out, how do we then connect along 34th Street? So I think throughout the course of all of these development strategies, we had this really, it would be safe to say that we had this focused on the core first, but how do we spread that prosperity out, even outside of the project area, along these sort of more, these, these local serving, but also regional corridors? Oh, sorry. And that led us to the economic development strategy, which is that first year, that first 10 years implementation strategy. We, again, just like we identified that making downtown Bakersfield High Speed Rail ready is revitalizing downtown Bakersfield, our economic development strategy is what we should be focusing on to implement the first 10 years. So you see some things, again, that are already in play currently, whether it's the P-Bid, or setting a goal for residential units in and around downtown, whether it's doubling the population or not. And then again, I, we started at a, at the top 10, if you will, but over the course of the process, working with both the stakeholders and the city, we threw in that 11, we should get a dozen or maybe a baker's dozen, but it didn't work out that way. So we had 11 at the end of the day, again, with this idea of the infrastructure master plan. We sort of heard over and over again on that point, we need to understand the capacity if we're expecting this amount of growth. And again, I think that's a, that's a city function, because we heard loud and clear from the private utilities that they'll be okay, they'll make the investments to make it work, for instance. So what are the investments the city needs to do to keep on par with that? And I think that's something that we identified as a need moving forward. I could go over all 11, but I think you guys, they're pretty straightforward. If you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them. So that sort of leads me to at least next steps on the vision plan, and again, I think Ms. Kitchen outlined that needs to well already, so we're here right now with the Planning Commission hearing. Mr. Vonberg is going to come up here in just a second and go over the draft environmental impact report. That meeting's happening now, and then, you know, we sort of move through this process. Ideally, we'll move to the city council process, will be adoption, but again, I think for us, both at SOM, but also at the city, and very early on in this planning process, it was really important that we tried to make a planning process that was implementation starting at day one. We tried to do everything that we could to build capacity, both locally amongst stakeholders, but also within the city, to enable, to sort of empower them with both the tools, but maybe even the knowledge of, of how to do this in the future. And, and as you all know, implementation is never done, and that's where the real work begins, quite frankly. And so with that, Mr. Vonberg, you want to come over and take the hot seat?
Yeah, you can stand, all right. Yeah, I'll do the slides for you.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioner, Eric Vonberg with Rincon Consultants. And we're part of the team preparing the EIR for this project, you know, the really exciting part, right? So just to get back, the purpose of an EIR is, is really to inform the public agency, decision-makers in the public, identify possible ways to minimize any identified significant impacts, and then to describe reasonable alternatives that maybe can reduce those impacts. The number one reason I really, you know, pursue is that to inform the public and so that you can make an educated decision on projects. The next one. So CEQA is really about process, and getting through the process is, as identified here is that you start out with a notice of preparation, letting everyone know, the public, that we are preparing an environmental impact report. And then with that comes a scoping meeting, which was held in September of 2016. We received 14 comments on that. The purpose of the, of the NOP is to, for the public, to identify what issues they want addressed in the environmental impact report. And then at that point, then we prepare the, an administrative draft environmental impact report, and then that becomes then the public report that goes out for public review, which was identified as in January of this year, that's out. And so we're in that 45-day public review period right now for the, for the EIR. And then once that 45-day review period is over, then we take all those public comments, respond to all those comments, and that becomes the final EIR, which would include any maybe changes to the EIR based on those comments or new information. And then that is, then goes to your city council for approval. So as Gunnar described, the vision plan, that's, that's what we addressed in this EIR, is what would be the potential impacts from this vision plan, you know, looking out 30 years. And in this case, it's what we call programmatic EIR, so looking at sort of the 30,000-foot level of what would be the potential impacts, because we don't have a specific project to look at. So in, in that case, we looked at the list of impacts that are required to be addressed, and as you can see on the screen, there was certain impacts that were identified as less than significant, that we didn't identify any real impacts that could occur from this project, or that it's really something that would need to be more addressed as projects, specific projects come in. There was then this list of significant impacts that, potentially significant, but then with mitigation, it would be reduced to a less than significant impact, and then we identified two potentially significant impacts, noise and transportation. Going back to the impacts that can be mitigated, listed here, the first three were air quality, biology, and cultural resources, and these were all pretty much can be addressed with sort of standard mitigations of complying with the Air Pollution Control District for specific areas, a health risk assessment for air quality. Certain projects might have potential impacts to endangered species, so that they would do project-level investigations on that to see if there are any potential impacts, and then develop mitigation for those specific projects. And that would be the same with cultural resources as well, just identifying through further studies. And then, and then the next three are greenhouse gas emissions, the tribal cultural resources and utilities and service systems. And again, these were all addressed with standard mitigations to further studies when projects come in, to make sure that, like, there's enough water for it, that there's, you know, potential to, for too much water to be used, so that create, make sure they use different efficiency standards to reduce the overall use of water within the downtown so that we don't go over capacity. And then that gets us to the two significant impacts. Noise, the, the main issue here was that there'd be additional traffic and congestion in downtown, that's what you want with the revitalized downtown. There's specific older buildings that you can't, you know, put in new noise attenuation measures, so that those, those noise levels might reach over a threshold, the standard thresholds for the city, so that those could be a potentially significant impact that we couldn't reduce the impacts to. And then regarding transportation, that we looked at, you know, you're going to increase congestion here, you're going to have more people in the downtown, you have your local street system, and you really can't expand that because of the existing infrastructure that's there. In a lot of ways, we don't want to do that, we want to, you know, look at mitigating that impact through transit, getting more walkability like the plan addresses. But as well as projects come in, we want to, for certain projects, they have to do a traffic impact study to see what level of impact there is there, and so these transportation impacts would then be addressed again at, at each project level, but overall, it was anticipated that would still be a significant impact for downtown. So then the last thing with an EIR is then developing alternatives to look at those significant impacts and other impacts, to see if there's ways to reduce that. significant impacts and other impacts, to see if there's ways to reduce that. One required is the no-project alternative. So basically, in this case, it's the sticking without the vision plan and just moving forward with the standard plans that are in place for downtown, and what would be the impacts there. Alternative two is what we call low-intensity design standards, so not going fully out with the vision plan, but reducing the amount of development that would occur. And then alternative three would be more than alternative two, but still less than the total vision plan there. And it was determined that alternative two would be the, what we call the environmentally superior alternative, that would have, you know, would reduce some of those impacts, but then with alternative two, you don't meet all the project objectives that you want with the vision plan and what you're anticipating with that. So again, so that was sort of the broad overview of the environmental impact report. And so, you know, the next step in the process is, we're in the public comment period here, so we'll be receiving comments tonight, and then as well, you know, people can get those comments, go to the next slide, so that those can still be sent to the city up to the 45-day review period, which will end on February 19th. There's the information up on the screen as far as receiving that, the information, and then that'll all be addressed in the final environmental impact report. And so that becomes part of the whole public record for the city council to make the decision on that. With that, that ends the presentation. Happy to answer questions, or we can...
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen. Do you have anything else?
No, I think that about covers everything. So once again, the purpose of tonight's hearing is for the public now to be able to provide comments, and we will take those into consideration and go back to our desks, per se, and prepare the responses to each of those comments as they are received. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we bring the lights back up, please? Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item and ask those who wish to comment to come forward to the microphone. Everyone that wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so, but please be courteous to others who wish to speak and do not repeat the remarks of previous speakers. You may pose questions during your comment, but the Planning Commission and staff will not answer them tonight. And if you wish to leave your documents with the Planning Commission for review, please feel free to provide those to the clerk at the conclusion of your comments. To ensure that your comments are recorded accurately, please speak clearly and slowly and state your name and address, can address, before you begin speaking. Remember to speak into the microphone, and please do not speak at the same time as someone else. May we have the first speaker? Hello?
How you doing?
Can you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Marvin Dean. I'm here to make a few remarks for the public record. I'm here to represent myself. I'm also representing, I'm a citizen of the First Ward, and I'm also a candidate for the First Ward City Council. I'm also here to represent tonight the High-Speed Rail San Joaquin Valley Association, which I'm a founding member, and also the Kern Minority Contracts Association, which is set on the High-Speed Rail Business Advisory Council. I've been a longtime supporter for High-Speed Rail, some of you know that. And I was very pleased with the fact that the city and the county eventually settled their lawsuit with High-Speed Rail to look at a locally-generated plan. So I was all excited about that. And that's this process. I was also, and I want to thank the staff for this vision, they had a stakeholder group that helped put together this process. I was one of the stakeholders involved in that. So I want to thank the staff because they opened it up and made it very inclusive for everybody to be involved. That being said, I do have some, let me just say, first of all, generally, I'm overall support of the recommendation in general. But I do have a few concerns that I want to raise. And I'll start with the last one, is I spoke to the consultant, as you look at that last slide, where it showed the question mark, then it shows southeast Baker, it show, it show East Bakersfield, then it said Lakeview. I would have liked it to say southeast Bakersfield. We are a community out there. We're not just Lakeview, it's a southeast community, just like East Bakersfield is considered a community. So if that could be corrected, because some people have the negative think about, when they think about that area, it's Lakeview, as some of you know. Now, Jackie had talked about that the decision has not been made whether or not, we will have a downtown station. It's just where it's going to be, whether it's going to be on F Street, or is it going to be the initial route, which is on Truxton and Union Avenue. So we will have a station, and I'm glad that we will have a station. And if it's really quiet, kept, as long as we had a station, I'm okay with wherever the station is. But I'm leaning for the station on Union and Truxton, because I think it's going to give us the biggest boom for our community. And one of the things that this plan did not do, and I tried to influence the process, but I hear tonight kind of why it was, that I would have looked at, seen a vision plan for both sites, not just the F Street site, but a vision plan also give emphasis on what it would look like if the site is moved to the Truxton and Union site. And I would just ask if the decision is made by the governing board of the High-Speed Rail Authority and the FRA, which we'll know shortly, because I think they closed the comment period on the 16th, that if it's decided to stay on Truxton and Union, where it's already been signed off on, that we take a second look at the vision plan, and we look at the, build out what would happen, the potential vision plan for that area. And I'm concerned about that area, because I believe it will bring major growth to the southeast part of our community and Old Town, the east part of our community, where you do a radius around that area. And I don't think we've done that to look at the economic benefit. I think right now, and I'm not opposed to it, I'm concerned about all of Bakersfield, I love all of Bakersfield, born and raised here, but I think this plan pushes the growth towards Oildale versus to the core of the city. And that's another reason why I support that location. And I, for a lot of reasons, I think that's really the main location, but that's not the drivers tonight. But I just wanted to put in the public record that if the decision is made to stay where it's already been signed off on, as Truxton and Union, in that area, kind of near the Amtrak, that we look at another vision plan for what does that mean in terms of the vision of the growth potentially, just draw a map around a station a mile or three miles out and look at that area and see what it will mean to housing, economic development, and all those things. So we can really have a plan that's going to really benefit our community, wherever the station's at. So that's my comment. But all in all, I thank the staff for what they've done and opened up the process, it was fair. One last thing I'm going to say on this, and I'll sit down. I'm pleased that the settlement was made to allow the city and the county and us to get our own plan, but I think it's cost us somewhat. Because initially, the plan to, initial operating system was going to go from Badera, Fresno, Bakersfield, Palmdale on into the LA area. Because of this delay, the focus was a shift to staying to go north. That means, and you hear about the financing of the High-Speed Rail as it is, so we don't even know when we will get a station and when it will actually come in to the build-out of Bakersfield. And we're going to be years away, and I think that that delay was partly caused, caused because of the decision, they had to go north. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Do we have any other speakers? If you intend to speak, it'd be great if you'd come up to the front row, then we can get an idea. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
My name is Terry Delamater. I am a retired pharmacist, and I have lived in Bakersfield virtually all of my life. When I grew up, Oak Street was the edge of town on the west side. Anyway, I'd like to start off by saying that I favor the F Street location for the terminal, for the high-speed rail terminal. And the reason I say that is that I believe that the F Street location lends itself to, in conjunction with the building of that station, to provide for a triple-A baseball stadium in Bakersfield. The size of our community is such that to be a great city, we need professional baseball. We have lost our A-class affiliate, but just as Fresno has an affiliation with the San Francisco Giants at the triple-A level, if Bakersfield had a triple-A caliber stadium, we would be a natural for an affiliation with the Los Angeles Dodgers. And if it were designed and planned, the high-speed rail as well as the triple-A stadium were planned and constructed in conjunction with the high-speed rail, I believe it would be a wonderful thing for the community. We already own the land, the public owns the land where Sam Lynn Ballpark is, and if we had the proper access from North Chester, Golden State Avenue, Columbus Street, and Airport Drive by way of Oildale Drive, I believe that it would be a real benefit for the community. Great cities have water, and we are so fortunate that we have the Kern River that comes through our community, from the mouth of the canyon to Hart Park to the Panorama Preserve, all the way out past Cal State, Bakersfield, and ultimately Buena Vista Lake. But where it comes through Bakersfield, specifically Oildale, it has been neglected, and it would be an opportunity to enhance the overall community, not just the downtown area, but with, we already have the bike trails that go along the river, and I think that we are not taking advantage of the asset that we have in the Kern River, such as San Antonio, Texas does. So anyway, I believe that a triple-A stadium and attracting a triple-A baseball team is very important for the future of Bakersfield, and the high-speed rail is also very important. But if we could combine them in the same general area, I think it would be a double win. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Can I ask for the consultant to bring up the 10-, 20-, and 30-year?
Can we get your names?
Yes, Adam Cohen.
Thank you.
And with your permission, I'd like to ask the consultant to bring up the 10-year development strategy, as well as provide you guys with some documents.
We'll have to get, hang on just a sec. You all right? Okay. He'll get you hooked up right now.
Thank you, Gunner. And I'm going to have you go to the 20 and the 30 in a moment. Do we have the bigger one, or is this as big as it's going to get?
I think that's it.
Okay. All right. So I'd like to, you know, my position is ironically, I don't normally agree with Marvin Dean, but my position is the same as his on high-speed rail. You know, the Truxton station is really important, really for the intermodal connectivity and with the connection to the convention center and the arena. Jackie did a wonderful job of showing how we're halfway in the system. And so it's not likely that you're going to ride high-speed rail, five hours round-trip to a business meeting in San Diego or San Francisco, but you're probably going to meet in the middle. And so what's walkable around there is important. And I think, you know, what's interesting is, is this process has really, in many ways, preceded the release of the EIR for that location. And having seen that EIR, there are some fundamental issues that aren't addressed in this station area process. For example, the addition of a freeway interchange at F Street and Golden State Avenue, also the addition of a 30-foot-tall retaining wall on the north side of that station that limits walkability to 34th Street. So there is an implicit assumption, and Gunner said it, you know, perfectly in the presentation, you know, that walkability is key. And there is an implicit assumption in everything that was developed thus far, that this was going to be walkable, because no one had seen what the High-Speed Rail Authority was developing when this document was developed. We now know it's not walkable, that there are some physical obstacles. So I'd like to point out here, I don't think anybody's going to have any issue on the 10-year development strategy. My only issue with this particular slide is that in the draft document, it's noted as development to Q Street, where in fact, the actual document shows that the development actually goes to Mill Creek. So that's one requested correction that I would have for staff. But I don't think you're going to have any issue with this. But I'd like to go to the next, the 20-year, and actually, let's just go to the 30-year, just to full-build out. Thanks, Gunner. You can't really see it too well because of the lights here, but what the 30-year shows is full build-out up, thank you. It's still hard to see, but I can kind of show it. I think you might see it better from this copy when I put this up here. So the 30-year, and I'm going to pass this around to you.
Why don't we just put it on the Elmo so the public can see it as well?
What do I need to do to? Oh, okay. Colors are a little bit better, but still not as bright as I would have hoped. We can go back to the overhead, ma'am. Thank you. So what this shows is it shows infill development, first going on the 10-year east to Mill Creek, which I said, I don't think anybody else is going to disagree with that. And then it shows us then switching directions entirely, putting development on Chester Avenue, right where the hospital is, has us, you know, redeveloping San Joaquin Hospital with infill development, which hasn't been addressed with them. And in so doing, that's not the way economic development works. It's not the way cities grow. We start with infill, and then we build up. Once we build out, we build up. And so to develop a vision document that does infill and then says, okay, now that we build out, we're going to build in a different direction rather than filling in with denser development, doesn't make a lot of sense. And as you guys have in your handouts, I've passed out the high-speed rail guidelines for development around the station. I think there's a lot of things in this EIR that conflicts with those. And, you know, some of our best professional experts here locally said it best, and if you see the two, the one-page document, in the middle two paragraphs, "As with every group endeavor, there are some concerns. The emphasis on Golden State and F Street site and the development around the proposed site could draw, and serve to draw away from the traditional core of downtown rather than to complement it. We do recommend that a similar effort be made into looking at the Truxton and Amtrak location." And I would agree with those experts, I would agree with this, with what Marvin Dean said as well that goes along with that, that even if high-speed rail is at F Street, that doesn't eliminate the fact that we need transit-oriented development around Amtrak. Yet, that hasn't been even addressed in this plan, in the 10-, 20-, or 30-year plan. Okay? The other thing I want to note is that shuttle service is not necessarily going to solve our transportation problems with the disconnect, not just between F Street and Amtrak, but the disconnect between that and our 10,000-seat arena. You know, all of a sudden, you know, when high-speed rail comes to town, we become a statewide facility that could be used for meetings, conventions, and the like. And so all of a sudden, you can see yourself having a concert or some other major event in town, and now having anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000 people getting into an Uber or taxi and going directly from the station elsewhere to downtown, because you can't walk. taxi and going directly from the station elsewhere to downtown because you can't walk between it. So I think these are some fundamental issues that need to be resolved. I'd like to conclude by just making some comments specific to the alternatives that were in the draft EIR. The beginning outlines three alternatives, no build, a low-density, and a medium-density alternative. And yet, the analysis that's done all the way throughout the EIR doesn't compare that until you get to the last chapter. And so you go through, and it references, you go to Table 36 to look at traffic, for example, and they have a no-build and a project alternative, not alternative 1, 2, and 3. And this is, this is a significant deficiency in that document. And, and so I think it's really important that these issues be addressed before this body makes a recommendation, before the document is even certified. I would encourage there to be a revised draft that addresses that issue, particularly with the alternatives not being fully identified throughout the analysis. So with that, you know, again, I'd like to say that there needs to be some, you know, planning around the Amtrak site for a variety of reasons as noted previously, and that we need to focus our development in the downtown core. And if you go to F Street, and, you know, there needs to be a way to get people to the downtown core that's not in motorized, you know, in a private vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we bring up the lights again, please? I don't want people walking in the dark.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners and staff. My name is Troy Hightower. I'm a local transportation consultant. I'll try and be brief. I want to start at the big picture on the high-speed rail in general. I do ride the train. That's my normal mode of transportation because I'm up and down the state a lot. I've ridden on high-speed rail in, in Europe. And I think one of the biggest economic benefits to Bakersfield in our region is that high-speed rail will connect us to the global economic hubs of LA and the Bay Area. Coming down here to Bakersfield, I have concern about this station, the study area, which is on the screen now, the yellow dash. Do you have the one that also has the rings around the? My concern is that typically, when you do these types of studies, the studies are either quarter-mile, half-mile, one-mile ring. That's it. Thank, thank you, Gunner. And that's on the screen now. That's typically the study area you would have. But you can see the study area that was selected does not include those areas. It has portions of the radius around F Street Station and portions around the Truxton Station. So, and I've brought this up in some of the stakeholder meetings with staff, and we've discussed it before, that the station, the study area could be that rectangle, but it should, at a minimum, include the radius around the stations. And I agree with some of the other commenters that since the authority has not selected a station, and as Ms. Kitchen has said, they haven't selected it yet, the Truxton location has been approved in their EIR, that a steady effort should include both. I understand that's a large study area, but my understanding is that this effort was funded in the tune of 900 million, I mean, 900,000 by, by the state. So I think the resources are there to include that. In addition, going to the EIR, a lot of the analysis is done and focused around the F Street Station. And I can't tell whether it's within the red boundary area they're analyzing or whether it's that dashed circle. It's not clear. It is clear that there isn't, or very little analysis of the southeast part around the other station location. So my concern about that is, one of the, the purposes of the EIR is to provide accurate information on the proposed projects. So if you want to compare, it should be a reasonable apples-to-apples. And I don't see it being that way as the way it's drafted now. And then furthermore, on the development patterns, the zero-to-10-year pattern that was developed, I think that's very reasonable. Since it goes basically from Chester to Mill Creek, the Truxton location is right there at Mill Creek. So the zero to 10, I think, can be done and could go forward no matter where, whatever station is selected, and I would support that. In addition, there's another concern about a parallel effort the state is doing with the EIR for the alignment, known as the LGA that was mentioned. That's the track. So that process is now estimated not to be completed until October of this year. So I, it makes me wonder why we should finalize a plan on an alignment that hasn't been cleared itself. So I think this may be a little premature, and I think I would recommend the commission to consider two things. One, more information about the Truxton location or comparable. It would be great to have another vision, as was mentioned before, of, of, around the Truxton Station so we could all compare. My understanding from the market analysis that the consultant did, the data did include the whole area. So there are good numbers to show what kind of growth could be at the downtown station. So to consider that as well as looking at finalizing, I, I would suggest not finalizing this plan until at least the alignment has been environmentally cleared. Thank you. Thank you, Gunner.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Wendell Wesley, Jr. And I'm really excited about the high-speed rail, mainly because I think it's very vital to the growth of Bakersfield in a very good way economically. And this has been a very long process. And I know everybody wants their area, whether it's Oildale or wherever it's from, to benefit from this. And you can't always please everybody, I realize that. But if you take a big plan and then build on that plan, I'm from San Jose, California. They have a light rail. Light rail can eventually make everybody that much closer to downtown, and you want to bring that light rail into the high-speed rail. This way, you cut down on a lot of traffic, you build some parking garage, and everybody's happy. You can take that light rail and bring it to all the key areas in your city where everybody wants to go, whether you're in the north, the east, the south, and the west. So we've wasted a lot of years. We need the jobs. I also heard that we lost what was a maintenance yard because of all this. That's a bummer. That maintenance yard would have been very vital economically to Bakersfield, being that I'm from the Bay Area. Maybe I can talk to Governor Brown. Because I am an outsider, maybe he'll listen to me. And this city's been great to me. So I will definitely back you guys. And I think it'll make a difference because I am an outsider. I'd like to see that maintenance yard back here where it belongs. That's all I got.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
My name is Heather Sisneros. I would just like to address a few things that I've heard here tonight. I am a resident of the Riviera Westchester neighborhood, literally a five-to-10-minute walk from the proposed F Street Station. I do a lot of walking in my current neighborhood and use the bike path frequently. I also have a two-year-old son who loves trains, and we weekly take a visit to the existing Amtrak station. So my perspective might be a little bit different than some of the other residents, but I haven't heard from any residents in the neighborhood tonight, so I just wanted to add my comments to the record. First of all, from what I saw from the presenter, all of the development was regarding the Garza Circle area. I didn't see much that commented on the actual F Street area, which is where the station would be located. There are a few businesses in that area, but it is a mostly residential district. So that is something that I would like to see taken into consideration and addressed The Mill Creek area, one of the things that they said was connecting the new high-speed rail station to the Mill Creek area in their development plan. However, the existing station for Amtrak is right near Mill Creek. As I said, I frequent the train station with my son, and we have walked often from the train station to Mexicali to have lunch, and then down Mill Creek so we can watch the ducks and see the fountains. So having a high-speed rail in the existing area does not negate the development that has been done in the Mill Creek area. It is very usable to have the high-speed rail there and to continue with the Mill Creek Another comment was, when planning for the future development, and someone else commented on this also, it really doesn't seem like there has been any apples-to-apples comparison. Everything seems to be focused on F Street. So I think it would be important for you to make an educated guess, to be able to have the information showing what a 10-, 20-, and 30-year plan would be if it were Truxton versus F Street. So you can look at both development plans and see how that will affect the city. I think that would also give citizens some confidence that both were being considered. At this point, from what I have personally seen, it seems like everything is geared towards F Street already, that a decision has already been made informally, and that, you know, the other one is not really an option. However, as the last speaker said, the alignment plan has not been finalized by the state. And so, you know, it, it kind of seems like everything's not connecting. In addition, as I said, the existing neighborhoods there don't really seem like they've been taken into consideration. I have not completely read the EIR, so maybe there's more in there that I have not seen. I will go back and review that. But in addition to the traffic in the areas, the walkability of the neighborhood, the things that we have now as existing residents, how is that going to be affected? Noise, traffic, those are obvious, and those are the ones that were the top impact on the EIR. However, there are a lot of young families that have moved into the neighborhood recently, and those are things that we are concerned with. And I did want to make a comment. One of the other previous speakers had mentioned the AAA baseball. I am a huge baseball fan, and I have gone to games at the Grizzly Stadium in Fresno. And I don't know how many of you have, but it is not in a very good area. It is not in an area of town I would want to compare our future development to model. I would love to see baseball back in Bakersfield, but I wouldn't want to try and, and model Fresno's plan as far as that goes. So I wouldn't use that as an example. Also, their Amtrak station is very close to their Grizzly Stadium, also not a great area. So just a few things to think about. However, I do agree with one of the previous speakers that I think it's important to keep the traditional core of downtown, to keep development around the existing Amtrak station. Whether the high-speed rail is there or not, I think it would be nice to see future development around there because it is a nice station, it's a nice area. I'm probably the only person I know of who goes there just casually, who doesn't use the train but goes to watch with my son. We also happen to go the Beale Library, which is right there. That's why we go to the station. And we also like to go to the Rabo Bank and look at the fountains. So all of those things downtown, it is nice to be able to have a place to walk, to look at things, to enjoy our downtown community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers? And I'll just caution, some things were a little bit repetitive there, the points that have already been made, please try, we're, we're trying to address all new points. Thank you.
I'm Bill DeCary. Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm a 43-year resident of Bakersfield and been following this project very astutely since 2011, when the first EIR was issued. And that was a draft EIR, and it had two alignments coming along Truxton Avenue to get to the proposed station at, at Truxton. And it was very destructive. It took out the Corporation Yard, Mercy Hospital, and there was a lot of public concern, public outrage, if you will. And as a result of that, about a year later, the authority issued a revised EIR with the hybrid alignment, which was essentially aligned down between the two other proposals, and really wasn't very helpful. It really offered little improvement. So the, fast forward to the, to the LGA, which is a totally different alignment. And in studying it, I used a summary of this supplemental EIR. And I basically relied on a table S2, which is a user-friendly table. It states the impact, and it shows the implications with the Truxton alignment, if you will, versus the LGA. And it's 18 pages, and it goes on with a lot of detail. And when you study that, there's really no comparison between the LGA, the Truxton alignment and this LGA. The LGA is far superior. So my point is, with the concern of the Truxton Station, we can't lose sight of the destruction that goes along with that. And certainly, I think, explains why we've spent so much time studying the, the F Street. It's really a far superior location. We can't destroy part of the city to build another part. And I think with the LGA, we can avoid all that destruction, the Corporation Yard, Mercy Hospital, Rabo Bank Arena parking. The, the LGA is a far superior alignment, and that's why the, the station at L Street and State Route 204 makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, planning commissioners. I wasn't really planning on, my name is Carol Bender. I wasn't really planning on speaking, but after hearing what Bill had to say, I totally concur with what he said. But I also wanted to comment that I see extending the downtown up to the 204 as a natural progression. And for those people that do live in Westchester, my daughter having lived there, F Street and the Montgomery Ward area there has all the potential to be revitalized and be a, a vital part of our downtown, an extension of our downtown. I don't see it as an either-or. I believe that the 10-year plan makes sense, and it, it is close to Mill Creek, and it is close to our Amtrak station. So we are paying attention to that as an asset. But in looking 20 years or 30 years forward, I would hope that we would grow our downtown, we would extend it north, that we would revitalize that area to make it more friendly to the neighborhood of Westchester that used to shop along F Street, that used to shop at Montgomery Ward, that used to have restaurants, a little bit newer than Westchester Bowl, although they have great fish. But that, that area needs some attention, and I don't, I see that as a big plus. And the other aspect of the Truxton location, in addition to the community assets that we would lose or that would be impacted and not mitigatable, you're going to be destroying and having high, 70 feet up in the air, trains going through northwest Bakersfield homes and what never, and impacting far more residents and people with noise, air, and visual aesthetic negativity all the way around. The other piece being that- The other piece being that recently, this week, we found out that the alignment, the Fresno to Bakersfield alignment, is needing 2.8 billion more dollars to mostly acquire land that they haven't been able to acquire. So whether they even get here in 30 years or not is a question. And should they decide not to continue south because of the expense of going through Tehachapi or changing their mind and going down 5? If we end up being the end zone where the Bakersfield station does get built, but we're the end of the line, I would, it would be far less destructive to have it in there than have it destroy all of our neighborhoods to Truxton and have it never be completed. It's just logical to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Carnes, local architect. And I'm not fully prepared this evening. I just found out about the meeting a bit late and arrived late, so I apologize for missing that presentation. I'm here to speak in favor of the downtown location for several reasons. One, I think the economic development should be within the downtown that we have already spent considerable funds for, the park and many other, all the trees downtown. When people use the high-speed rail, they're coming for events. The events could be RoboBank, which is right there, hotels are immediately available. The F Street would require much more development in that line. I wasn't clear on the heavy maintenance facility, that we had lost that opportunity. I thought that was still an option that was still available. And if it was, it would only be available for the downtown station route. I'm also not clear on the cost. It was my understanding, the F Street one would be more expensive because the downtown estimate included costs for the heavy maintenance facility. So I appreciate everybody's effort in doing this. I realize it's a very sensitive and important decision for downtown, and thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Going once, going twice. All right. We will now move on to Commissioner comments. Are there any Commissioners wishing to weigh in, ask any questions to be addressed? Commissioner Kater.
I didn't think I'd be the first one up. Sorry. I thought I saw Larry press his button. He did a fake out. Thank you all for coming tonight. It's really great at these meetings when public come out and express their support. I just, in looking at the plan, want to, first of all, thank city staff and the community and SOM and just all the work that went into it. I think it's an inspiring document. I think it's inspiring because it hits on big ideals that extend beyond a specific site. I think often in this process and with anything that takes a lot of many years of planning, things change and things are fluid. So I respect that the document creates strategies that create how, kind of, a sentiment of how we would like to grow as a downtown. And so with that, just looking at some of the implementation plans, in the zero-to-10 range, I think there's a few things regarding infrastructure and pedestrian plans that I think affect the everyday of how we do business as a city. And so a question that I have for staff in moving forward with the next meeting, where we'll actually discuss the document, is, you know, actionable items as far as verifying stormwater, verifying sewer, implementing walkable strategies so as we receive funding to increase handicap access at intersections and, you know, do curb and gutter. Are we working towards the vision that's stated in this document? And so I just appreciate a staff response on that for our next meeting.
And let me just be clear, Commissioner Kater, that the comments that made by the Planning Commission tonight are just comments like the public is making, so they'll just be responded to in the final EIR.
Yes, and that's fine. I just, yeah, I guess, so I guess my more general comment would be the kind of actionable items for infrastructure improvements and pedestrian improvements in the downtown area.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. I want to thank the staff for the detail that was included in this report. I'm very pleased to see that. As some of you know, my background as the past chairperson of the Redevelopment Agency, I have a vested interest in the downtown redevelopment. And this is, in my mind, a very good extension of those things that the city has already been working on for the last, well, almost 20 years now. So I'm glad to see that we haven't abandoned what we started. We tried to make this plan work with that. You know, we're obviously, we're not here to discuss the merits of high-speed rail, but it's really important that the city continue to look at how that impacts us. And if there's an opportunity to benefit from it, we need to be looking at that. And so I appreciate the overall plan. I like to reserve specific comments, I'll like to send to you in writing, that I have. One of mine specifically is the in-and-out of downtown. You know, many people live southwest, northwest, other areas, and it's frequently difficult for them to get to the downtown and then get out of the downtown. And so there's a reluctance of people that live outside the downtown to come downtown for evening events, come to dinner, those kind of things. There's a little bit of reluctance, and part of that has to do with the infrastructure, roadways, those kind of things. So I'd like to have that addressed as well. You know, I look forward to some changes at Garza Circle so that the welcome mat for Bakersfield off Golden State Highway is not a strip club, and a muffler shop is no muff too tough. I'd like to see us have a little bit more of a welcoming presence there in that area. So anyway, just to get back to that, thank you very much to the staff for your work, and I appreciate the audience's comments. I was very pleased to see so many positive comments. Questions, yes, and we all have questions. And I think that over time, those questions will be addressed, and, you know, maybe all of us will be satisfied, maybe we won't have everything we want. But I think that with all this public comment, we'll come up with a good plan that serves Bakersfield into the future. You know, we wonder if high-speed rail will occur in my lifetime. I don't know. But I'm glad to see us looking 30 years down the road. So thank you.
Thank you. I see no other lights, so I will now close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to refer the comments received tonight to staff for response? I need a motion.
Make a motion to refer to staff.
That was from Commissioner Bell. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Wade. A roll call vote?
Commissioner Lomis.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
And I'd like to remind the public that the public comment period on the draft-making downtown high-speed rail station area vision, plan, and draft environmental impact report remains open until February 19, 2018. You can still submit your comments if you weren't able to, or if you think of something else. You're still able to do so. And we will move right along to Agenda Item 7, Communications. Ms. Kitchen, do we have anything?
Other than to reiterate the hard work of staff and thank staff that's here, from all departments, including our consulting team. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner comments, Agenda Item 8. Nobody, so we are adjourned. Thank you and good night, and thank you for everyone that came tonight.